Good evening, welcome to the Lumpok City Council Workshop. And could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Hombdal?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Here.
Councilmember Lingle?
Here.
Mayor Potam Costa?
Present.
Mayor John Lin?
Here. I don't have it on the agenda, but we have a new church in town. Reverend Santa Anna and I were getting together chatting on the weekend, and he volunteered to come and give us an invocation. This is his first opportunity to come to a council meeting and do an invocation. So if you'd all please rise, and Reverend, the podium's right here.
Let's pray. Oh blessed Father, Creator of the universe, God of the sky and the earth, we stand before you and pray for these great and honorable members of the city council, oh our great city of Lumpok, merciful God, we ask that you extend your hands open to each of these members who have been elected to make laws and decisions for benefits of us, the citizens of this wonderful city. Always give them health, peace, prosperity, and above all, wisdom and understanding in their noble quest for justice and equality. You guide them so that they always be conscious for your presence, and will strive to make laws with honesty and integrity accordance with your holy will. Father, that this day your grace is spilled abundantly in this present, and because all of us says in God, we trust. Amen.
Amen. We'll go for the whole deal. If you join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, a nation, a God, indivisible, with every day and justice for all.
Reverend Santa Anna's church is over on I Street and has recently expanded from a mission to a full church, and he's joined us all the way from Texas. So, welcome Reverend, and thank you for coming. Right, like four doors down from you. Yeah, yeah. Matter of fact, I told him to come see you, but he's been pretty busy. Okay, so we'll have oral communications now, and this is your opportunity to speak to us about anything. Really, the function of this workshop is to talk about the things that we took on two years ago and see which ones we're going to carry forward into our next two-year plan. So, who would like to speak to us about something? Going, going, gone. Okay. The first thing today I would like to talk about is kind of a look going forward at how we might deal with our -- and I'm going to read through this, I didn't bring 100 copies for everybody. It says, "During the course of the fiscal year 1314 goal-setting workshops, one of the tasks to be accomplished will be for the council to review and revise the council handbook. To simplify the process for staff, I propose the following procedures. One, as the council determines that -- determines what work, staff, or council will perform on each project, they will assign a priority number to it. It'll be the same priority numbers that we decide on from our current sheet after we amend that, and that'll be the next step. And then during the second workshop, we -- the council will sort through all of the items in a particular category. So we'll take all the ones, and then we'll prioritize the ones, because there -- last time around, there were a bunch of ones. And this will assist the city administrator in assigning staff projects according to the council priorities. Remember that since some staff may be assigned more priorities than others, projects may be completed according -- are completed according to workload, which may result in some completed more quickly than others. And that is to say that if one particular staff member only has one thing assigned to them, and it happens to be a number four, that might come in ahead of some other number twos where a sta -- another different staff member might have a couple three numbers, number ones or number twos. So it isn't a finite thing that all the ones will get done first and all the twos will get done first, but it prioritizes the way they're assigned out. Each of the projects will be assigned a permanent project number, which will show whenever the project is listed. And last time, projects changed numbers as they went through, and then you'll notice that some of them showed up on the list several times, because each time there was an action item, we kind of restarted the clock on them. And this time, we'll just accumulate them. Staff will create three lists of all projects, which will be updated quarterly, copied and placed in all council mailboxes. The list will be the same as they are now, the projects completed, the projects that are ongoing, the projects not yet begun, which is the same way we've done it this year. Upon completion of any project action, that action will be noted under the project on the project list. So if a project goes through four or five steps, the four or five steps will be listed. At the first meeting in July and the last meeting in October of each year, the council may add projects to the project list with approval of three members at these council meetings. To minimize the changes, and this is a new thing, to minimize the changes in project plan in between these two meetings each year, only projects that we all deem extremely urgent or emergencies will be added to the project list. Because one of the difficulties we've had is we've been a little too generous with new things through the course of the two years. This will allow the staff to focus on projects for six months without distraction of newly added projects. And the only exception to this will be the addition of cost savings or revenue generating projects during the council budget workshops, which will be coming up. And then finally, letters of resolution or support or opposition from the council are not covered under number four above. So those, we don't necessarily plan those out. Those are more reactive to things around us. Are there any thoughts from the council on this as a format for going forward? Councilmember Lingle?
Mr. Mayor, the projects are different than a council request.
Same thing, I -- just the word I used. Council request could be subsequent to that word.
So what you're saying is that only in July and October, we can make a council request?
Those are the times that we would make them unless it was something urgent or an emergency.
I understand the reasoning for this. Often, we will sometimes overburden staff, because we -- in the past couple of years, we have made many council requests, but often a council request will come up definitely in a span of six months. And I'm a little concerned about this, actually, that we only have twice a year that we can make a council request.
No, that's not true. If it's something urgent or an emergency, we can. We're just going to practice a little more self-control. You know, we're just going to gauge it ourselves and go, you know, this can wait, or no, this is very urgent, and I'm going to talk to the council about it and see if we're going to add it. It's not an absolute, this is just a guidance to try to get us to be judicious. Councilmember Costa, I see your finger hovering.
Thank you, Marilyn. I agree with Councilmember Lingle. Thank you.
Okay, back to you. Oh, Dirk?
Yeah, I was going to say, if three of us think that it's worth bringing up, then I think it's something that we should bring up, and not just limit it to us twice a year.
Well, I didn't. Like I said, if we feel it's urgent or an emergency, we can bring it up. I'm just trying to get everybody to try not to. Think it all the way through and try not to, if you don't have to. Not trying to stop anything, I just want us to take it one little step further before we propose something.
Mr. Mayor, and I agree with that. I think the word limited to, I think your word is emergencies. There are, what's, I guess we'd have to define what emergency.
No, no, I said extremely urgent or emergencies. I use two words. But if you have a better word you like, I'm flexible.
I think we all understand, based on this, that we need to use some self-control. And the five of us up here have to, when one of us make this request, we have to really think, is it, do we just want to do it because, you know, Dirk is my friend, and I want to go along with him? Or is it really, really important? So I think we leave it up to ourselves to say, you know, is this really that important? So common sense, a little control on ourselves, but I'm still going to stick with it, not that I really feel twice a year for a request is probably too limiting.
Okay, so how do you feel about changing it to just urgent? Deemed urgent will be added to the project list. Dirk?
If you want to know how I feel, I think we should continue as we're going, and then maybe we should use the first meeting in July and the last meeting in October to go through our council requests.
Well, we're going to do that, too. Okay, well, what's pleasure. I'm easy. You know how I feel, so if we can find a middle ground, that would be good, and if not, it's okay, too.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that we all understand right now that it's a concern for both us and staff, and let's review this in three months to see if we are exercising some control and maybe bring it back in three months. But right now, I agree with Councilmember Starbuck. Let's leave it the way it is right now. Remember, it was only in the past two years that we had to have two council members agree before a council member could bring it up, and it, I don't even think it took a second. I think it just took a council member to bring it up. So we have implemented more control over the past two years by having two additional council members affirm that it is something that we want to hear more information on. So I would like to see us leave that as is, but review it in three months.
Okay, so what we would do then is we would delete the sentence from "to minimize" on down in paragraph four. Everybody good with that? Down to, it doesn't matter then. Okay, so that'll get it. Everybody good with that? I just soon hear everybody say yes. Ashley? Unless there's something else you want changed?
I would just like to add that, you know, that we would review, just to ensure that everything's written down here, that we would review those that had been made in between those months as well. Right?
We would receive a written report every quarter, and we would do an in-depth review in the first meeting in July and the last meeting in October each year. And those would be the date certens when we would do a more in-depth review, but we would get an update quarterly.
Sure.
And obviously, anybody can ask about any project at any time. Okay? Dwayne? Okay for you? Dirk?
That's fine. I just want to make comment, too.
Okay, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, one of the things that I think that we've done recently, and I think that it's got to be working better for staff and council, but some concerns are, rather than ask for a full staff report, what are, something that's been happening lately is we would be very happy with a memo. An example would be two of them. Last meeting council had, Councilmember Costa had a request, you know, a memo and an update on the California Space Enterprise Center, and I had a request about the Navy flagpole status. These memos were received in two days, very short period of time. I think that the staff time limit was very minimum. Everybody on council was aware, and was a very efficient means of communication between council and staff. The only other question I would have is, it seems to work well, we could use this as our request, but is the public able to see these memos when they're answered? Or do these come just to us on the council?
Councilmember Starbuck, they're just distributed to council as the request, so there's a different course you'd like to take.
Well, I'd like to discuss it, I think, because I think it's a great way. It saves a lot of staff time, it gets the answers back to us quickly. But on the other hand, the people that were here that said, you know, I have interest in that EEG, you know, project two, what is the status on it? And somebody says, you know, I was curious about that flagpole myself. We know, you know, they don't know. So is there a way we could go ahead and post these on the website under something? Or this is a method of communication, I think, that's working well and taking very little staff time, but to bring it out where everybody could see it.
That's council's pleasure. We can post them on the website.
My only comment is, is that we've asked for, and the memo comes back, there's no reason why, unless there's something changed since I was here last, that a council member could not read that himself and let the public know what it said. In other words, instead of just keeping it to yourself, I think your idea is great, but why not just let everybody know?
These go to all council, right?
Yeah, so if it's a question a council member asks, and you're getting a response to it, or any good, you shouldn't go ahead and share it with the general public who's listening to it. I think that that works out real well.
I don't mind reading it at the following meeting, but I still think, and if I'm going to read it at a meeting, it should be established on the website, then, at least for anybody that can't make the meeting.
Okay, maybe you could take a quick look at that and see what it would take to do that. Let us know at the next workshop. The next thing I'd like to take on is the priorities that we established in 11-8 of 11, and see if we want to make any changes in those for the next two years.
Which one did you say, on these?
Yeah. So priority number one is economic development. Priority number two is public safety. Priority number three is code enforcement and graffiti abatement. Priority number, priority number four is efficiencies. Number five is accountability, and number six is miscellaneous. The only thing that I would contribute is, I might make it economic development and jobs, but beyond that, I'm pretty good with all of it. Let's go from the left. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I propose that council priority three gets moved to council priority five, and the others move up two slots. Thank you.
Five or, oh, I got it, okay. She wants to swap three and five. I'm sorry. Put three in five and move four up to three and five up to four. Put this one right here. Dwayne, what do you think?
I don't see any changes. I don't know how you handle all this, but I think one of my priorities, it goes back to economic development, and part of that economic development is advertise what we have going on at Hancock College. We should have something put together now so we can go to conferences and such to tell them what we have coming down the road. And that, that's where the economic development comes in. I know they've been working on it, but it'd be nice to have something I can hand-carry to a conference or other places.
Okay. Dirk?
I'm fine, and I understand why we would want to shift those in priority, but the one thing, and I intend to submit it on the 14th, is I'd like to change the wording on number three from code enforcement to proactive code enforcement slash graffiti abatement.
Okay, well, we can take that on at that time. Because that surely will be a topic. Councilmember Lingle?
I'm also in favor of keeping them the same, but if we want to bring accountability up, I would have no problem with switching four and five. But I believe code enforcement is awfully important, and the way I am looking at the next two years as well, the next four years. So I'd like to see code enforcement having a high priority, but I'd have no problem switching four and five, to bring accountability up at least a little bit.
Well, I think this time around, I probably agree with Councilmember Costa, but it seems like there's more people want to leave it as it is.
I'm fine with moving, doing the shift.
Are you? Okay. I'd just soon do that. Put, move four to three, five to four, and three to five.
You're putting three to five?
Yeah.
I thought you were just bringing five up to three, three becoming four and four becoming five.
Did I do it right, actually?
That's how I prefer.
Yeah. Yeah? Dirk? You still on board with it?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Just like, I'm going to want to add the proactive to it.
Yeah, we can do that after we address the subject. Like that.
Well...
One, two, three, four, five, six.
No, I'd be against code enforcement being five, but that's okay. I mean, it's, we go with the majority here, so.
Okay, done. Okay, next, I want to, we'll start in and...
I haven't submitted that.
That'd be in the next, that'd be in the workshop, the next. This isn't done. It'll, this'll come back redone, and then we'll, we can make that decision, too. Realize that what we're working on here today is the first step. The next meeting will be the step where we finish it. The next one, I think, the next step would be to take our list, and I'd like to start with the outstanding council projects first. Excuse me. And really, I think if they're done, or we're not interested in going forward with them, it doesn't really matter. I think what we're, what we want to talk about here is the things that we're interested in going forward with. And I'm just going to, on this page, I think there's going to be a lot of things that we want to go forward on, so I'm going to take them one at a time. When we get back to the done things, I think the pages might be pretty thin for things that are still going to be carried on. So number one, integration of the city Facebook and Twitter. I'm in favor of continuing that. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't bring my red pen. Number two, allowing chickens at the city limits, which is in for planning commission review right now. I'm sure we would want to continue that since it's going down the road. Everybody nod up their head? That Bob doesn't want to continue it? Okay, well, we got four and... Did you bring your chicken? Okay. Item number three is going to go in a different direction. Item number four, one-year review following installation of the police-granted surveillance system. I assume we want to get our review back on that.
Marilyn, really quickly, on item number three, I'm confused by what you mean. That's going to go a different ways. Is this, do we need to change the title of this request? Do we need to remove this request?
At this time, we would remove this request.
Okay, so I'm, because this hasn't gone anywhere, I'm in favor of removing this request at this time.
Okay.
Do we have everybody, is everybody in?
Remove item three.
That's fine with me, because I have something during the 14th to submit on this anyhow, so, yes.
Okay. So number four, one-year review following installation of the police-granted surveillance system, continue that.
Yes, Marilyn. And I was just going to inquire from the city administrator if that was somewhere on the forefront, as it has been over a year at this point.
Councilmember Costa, that is scheduled on your future council agenda list for February 5th.
Thank you.
And then, item number five, we could leave that on, but it's my intention to bring a much more expanded discussion of that item. So from my standpoint, I'd just soon drop it off here, because it's on my list, covering a broader range of subjects than just this, and with regard to the landfill.
Is that something that you would make as a formal request in the future on the dais? Is that what your plan is?
No, it'll be in the workshop of the 18th. It's on my workshop list. It's just much broader than this description. So rather than having two competing items, I would probably drop this off and then bring on the item on the 18th, and we could all put our contribution into it.
I'm okay with that.
Is your request going to include the review of fees?
Yes. It...
The whole thing?
It covers a very broad look at the landfill, both fees, method of collection, some documents I obtained from the county, a whole bunch of things, so. Everybody okay with letting this one go for now?
Bring it up on the 18th?
Yep. Okay. Number six, city...
Mayor and council, I just want to advise you also that scheduled on the future agenda list is a solid waste rate study for, you know, we don't have a date certain, but it's...
It's out there.
Late February, early March.
Okay, thank you. And then, the city policy for financial reporting and monitoring of nonprofit organizations, I'm sure we're continuing that. Yes? You guys on the right aren't nodding very much.
Well, I want to make sure that this is what we're going to include as our contract complacency.
Yes. Yes. The council intern program. Frankly, I've been struggling with what it is that we want to do, so I'd like to take a few minutes and talk about that, and talk about what our vision is of that, and particularly, I think it was Councilmember Costa's suggestion back when, and kind of figure out how to use it. And the first thing I think we need to talk about would be whether or not we want to establish what the criteria would be for an intern, or if we want staff to bring back some criteria. I put some notes down, if we want to talk about that here. And then, I think, talking about some projects that an intern might best be suited for, and having had some discussions now with people, it seems like interns should be focused on a limited number of projects, because there's a training time involved in getting them up to speed on a project. So let's take the first half first. Would we like to talk about the qualifications for an intern, or would we prefer to have the staff come back to us with a set of qualifications? Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. You are correct in that I suggested, I was the one that requested this item, so I'm glad that it's something that we're discussing. I'm okay with qualifications. My assumption is that an intern would be treated the same as a commissioner, where they would be officially appointed, they would have to go through the ethics training, and that as councilmembers, we would have the discretion to choose whom we feel would be best fit for that position. Understanding that, though, I understand that their set of qualifications is appropriate, and having a set boundary or set guidelines is appropriate as well, because, you know, staff only has so much time to do what they're doing to get somebody else up to speed, could be even more work. Although that wasn't my intention, my intention was more, you know, I'm thinking of when I was an intern, you know, and I would be given one task, and I would be able to, as a council member, delineate very clearly what task that is without them probably even needing to talk to staff. It's more external research or reading or things like that. So I'm not prepared necessarily to discuss the qualifications at this time, so perhaps staff can start that process and bring it back to us for discussion on a later date. Thank you.
Okay. And my, just in, I'm not sure where we were going when we passed it, because it was too long ago, but my thought was that we were going to bring in an intern who would work on some projects, not necessarily for any of us individually, but some of the, some of the council projects. For instance, the Facebook, Twitter would be probably a good one, and establishing the policy and getting that going, or implementing the next door that we already passed, those sort of things. Is that what you envisioned?
I envisioned that a council member could have an intern if they would like, and could, if they wouldn't like one, that's fine as well, but not that there would just be one for everyone, that there would be, just as a commissioner is appointed by, per council member, the intern would be as well.
And was your thought that that intern would be working at city hall, or would be working on their own somewhere else?
Mostly on their own somewhere else, and if they're in city hall, it would most likely be when I was here as well. That would be my assumption, that, you know, it's not somebody you would just turn loose in city hall. I think there's a lot of liability with bringing an intern on in the first place, and we have to be very careful of that. So that's, I don't know if that answered your question?
Yeah. I guess it was never clear to me what, where we were going with this. Okay. Okay. Let's work from the right this time. Councilmember Lingle would...
I have no problem with continuing it. I was always concerned at what this intern program was going to be. My concern is, and it's getting cleared up a little bit right now, or actually, it's becoming more confusing right now, because if it's going to be one intern for the council, that would be less staff time involved in it. If it's one intern per council member, I'm only imagining the amount of staff time that this could take, where an intern goes in and spends, like, take the Facebook and Twitter project up there. How much time would the intern have to spend with staff in our IT department to figure out how the Facebook and Twitter is going to be incorporated? I'm just using this as an example. We were concerned earlier about utilizing staff time, and I'm concerned that this may put extra burdens on our staff if we do something like this. So, I guess I have a question for councilmember Costa. Your intention was to have one intern per councilmember. That was your original intent?
Correct. It was not my intention that they would do things such as the city Facebook and Twitter, however.
It was more of a, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I guess I need more clarification on what your intent was then.
There is some, I think that creating a set of guidelines and workload guidelines would, needs to be delineated here, that hasn't been delineated as such. But for me, if I have a council, if I appoint a council intern, they have some legitimacy in being in City Hall alongside me, doing certain city business, you know, or helping me with certain city business, but I wouldn't expect that person, or staff rather, to interact with that individual and take any of their staff time. For me, it's, there's, for example, let me just give a very general example, there's an item on an agenda about creating, I don't know, whatever it is, a new marketing for, well, that would never happen here, creating, I don't know, something, some project, and I need some background and some history about how other cities have done it, or maybe it's about old theaters and what other cities have done, what, you know, what propositions they've gone through, and how things have worked with that. You know, and I have this, a lot of our material to read through. I may ask an intern to go do some research in regards to what other cities have done, and give me some information that way. That's the kind of tasks I'm thinking about. You know, perhaps it is going through a file that I have at City Hall, or looking through some paperwork, but I don't, at least in my own mind, I didn't see it as somebody who would take a lot of staff time. As I mentioned, if we create certain guidelines for the position and the workload, I think that we can limit any councilmember's ability to take any of staff time for this program.
So, kind of what you were envisioning was like an intern as a research assistant?
Somewhat, yeah.
Okay.
And also to give, you know, give that, and I, you know, the reason I proposed it originally was looking at it the other way, which was, you know, for me, government doesn't necessarily create jobs, you know, we create the environment to create jobs, and so this is an indirect way of giving somebody some experience that they can put on their resume and have a really great reference after a certain period of time from the mayor or councilmember, to help them continue on with their career and potentially get a paying job, or get into a college, or whatever it was, you know, because for me, there's no necessary age limit on who can be an intern. That was my motivation.
Well, I think maybe you understand it more clearly, because you've done it, and none of us, well, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I haven't, so I don't have any understanding of what one does. So, your concept would be that they would be, basically be a research assistant, they would be supervised by the councilmember, they would only interact with the staff with the councilmember, not on their own principally?
I mean, I would say that there'd be maybe a rare occasion where there may be a meeting of some sort, but I can't imagine that there would be a meeting. I wouldn't want to be sitting on it anyway, so...
Okay.
But I mean, you know, I think delineating the guidelines also ensures that, you know, a councilmember doesn't ask an intern to go get them coffee all the time, or do something. I know that sounds very funny or inappropriate, but to ensure that, you know, their interns are used in the right manner.
Okay. Would you be comfortable with coming back with some guidelines with regard to that, since you have experience at it?
I'd be more than happy to work with, I mean, Laura, or, excuse me, city administrator Barcelona, what is your preference? Would you prefer that I create a working document that I provide to you, or that we work together, or that staff come up and bring it to council?
I would prefer that staff set the guidelines, and then bring it to council, and we develop something, you know, with those guidelines.
Sure.
Thank you.
Is it clear enough now where you're going? Okay. Perfect. You got something to say?
I always have something to say.
Oh.
I was just gonna make a comment. If my intern is like my tablet, I might break it.
Sure.
When I looked at this originally, I thought it was an intern for the council, not for a councilmember. I think we could use an intern at times. Organization I do belong to, the Housing Trust Fund, we have interns come in and do special projects, and do that project out and finishes it out. I, right now, unless I have something that changes my mind, I don't see why I need a intern working for me. If we have an intern, I'd rather see him working for the whole council on special projects. That's what I look at, and that's, I think, is what's definitely needed coming down the road as we look at job and economic development. Taking time out for each councilmember to have somebody do that just doesn't run well with me.
Marilyn, I just wanted to note that it was my intention, and this is for SaaS clarification, that it was, it would be each councilmember's choice whether they would like to have an intern or not. You wouldn't be required to appoint an intern. Thank you.
Anybody over here on the right got something to say? Okay. So, we'll hand that one off to the staff. Number eight, we've resolved that, so that one's done, the discussion of term limits. No, time limits. I'm all right. Time is. We talked about that, and we just said, no, we'll be better. Workshop to discuss a plan for action on the homeless services.
Marilyn, can you please, sorry, you're going a little quickly here, sorry. So, you're removing item number eight, is that correct?
We already, yeah, we, we, no, we didn't.
We tabled, agendas and tabled this...
Yeah, I thought we'd finished it.
I don't disagree that I, I think that it should be removed. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody good with taking out eight? Okay. Number nine, a workshop to discuss a plan of action for homeless services, and that also ties in with item 11. How do we want to go forward on those?
Marilyn, those are both items that I proposed, so I want to continue efforts. I do think that item number 11 should be council priority five, not council priority six, as the council priorities sit now.
Is it, would there, could we combine those into a single effort, since they have a lot of parallel? Yeah.
I, although I understand where you're coming from, for me, a plan for a homeless service and a plan for low-income housing, although they're tied, they are, for me, separate subjects, and you would probably need separate folks present, some folks similar, but perhaps if we want to do a workshop in two sections on the same day, I'm fine with that, but I don't want these to just get lost into one another, because they were two separate intentions on my behalf.
Okay, how about if we move both of those to the 18th as topic items for the 18th? For the 18th work, I'm sorry, the 20th, excuse me, the 20th workshop? To try to flesh them out a little bit.
So, the 20th is for new projects?
Well, we could, we could take these two in that and try to flesh out what it is that we want to do, so the staff has a direction going forward.
I think that part of that would probably be going back to watch the video and see how I requested it in the first place, but if we need to talk about it more, I'd be comfortable doing that now, or if we have to wait, we can wait on that also.
Well, how about if we set this on the 20th, and then if we get done early, we'll come back to these two? Is that okay?
Sure, thank you.
Okay, good. And then, number 10, discuss, discussion on the requested upgrade funding for the pedestrian walkway on the Caltrans 246th Bridge. That was actually mine, and I'd like to continue that. There is some discussion at SB CAG with regard to that now. I just want to keep it on their fire. Everybody good with that one? Okay. And then, we talked about 11. Number 12 is coming to us on the 18th, so that would be a continuing item. Everybody okay with that? Yeah, everything is gonna go to the new list when we get all done with this. There'll be a consolidated list that the staff will put out of everything from this workshop and the other workshop, all prioritized with new numbers that'll be their permanent number, although that one might be gone by then, because on the 18th, it's scheduled to be looked at. Number 13, that one is actually set up for the other meeting, so that's done in terms of this list, because it's already over there on our calendar. It's not done, but it's reassigned in a different direction.
So, that should be considered ongoing?
Yeah, it's, it's out there. I don't know.
That begs a good question, and maybe, I was waiting to have that discussion until we get to page four, but I'm, I think I might be confused as to what completed actually means in this case, because for me, something just being allocated or scheduled isn't necessarily completed?
Yeah, I see your point on that.
So, I mean, if we need to add, you know, if there needs to be another classification...
No, I think just continue is, we won't make it too complicated.
So, this would be an on, as an ongoing?
Yeah. I'm using C's for continue, just to be, that's why I keep saying it. The next one would be to review the county's participation, the County Urban Consortium, and we have a letter from the Human Services Commission asking us to withdraw from that, that all of you received dated December 3rd, and so I would think we would want to continue this item going forward.
Yes.
Okay. And then, the staff report on the process to select CHODOs, as we currently don't have one, and perhaps we could enhance that to say, to just put an RFP out, or an RFQ, whichever one of those RFs, it would be a P, to solicit CHODOs, so that there's some action associated this, with this. We did? Okay. Okay. So, that would be a continuing item. And then, I think...
Sorry, can we be very clear what our three categories are, so then that way staff has no question? Are we calling it continuing?
Anything we're doing today is a continuing item.
We're continuing it on the outstanding list.
Correct. And it wouldn't be completed, because there won't be any completed, so it'll land on the outstanding list.
Got it. So, number 13 is still considered outstanding, and number 12 also is still outstanding.
Everything on here would be considered outstanding.
Mayor and council, I misunderstood you. I thought the general plan update will be on, ongoing, because that's going to be throughout the year.
Yes.
So, it'll be moved to the ongoing list.
And it's up to the staff to put it on a list. I mean, they're gonna put it where it most applies.
Okay.
They wouldn't put it on the "we haven't started" list yet, and it wouldn't go on the "we're done" list, so that would be the ongoing list.
Okay, but that's what I'm saying, is number 15, then, as we've just been told, because something has been done with it already, and we're waiting to hear back from staff, that would be an ongoing instead of an outstanding.
There's, there's the "we haven't started it," there's the "we're working on it," and there's the "we're done." So, it would be the "we're working on it," because we have started.
Which is the ongoing list.
Okay. There you go. All right. I think number 16 is the continuing one, the theater. And then, we're gonna go over to ongoing council policy requests. Items number one through 17 on this sheet.
Marilyn, I know that it isn't on there, but since we just finished one whole page, do you want to see if there's any public comment at this time?
Sure. Anybody got anything to say? Nope. Okay. Now, moving on to the ongoing council policy requests. We have, and this is kind of the way I looked at it, on page one, we have the general plan workshop coming up, and so all of these things that are on here that deal with something to do with the general plan, I view it as, we're done with them, because they're part of that workshop, and rather than carrying them forward as 15 different items, they'll come out of that workshop as an item, once the council decides what we're doing and in what timeframe we're doing it in.
But again, that wouldn't be completed, that would be outstanding.
It's just...
Or ongoing.
It's a question of whether we want to carry this item forward, or we want to carry a single item forward on, with regard to the workshop. And my, to shorten the list, I would just carry the workshop forward, and these things would be combined as part of it, because they're in that workshop discussion, and this is my item, so that's, I'm just trying to simplify it a bit.
So, you're consolidating all of these multiple requests to one ongoing request?
For general plan.
That is about the general plan update?
Yes. No, just like this one has to do with the zoning ordinance, everything that has to do with the general plan will be consolidated with the single item, so we're not carrying 10 items forward that all have to do with the same thing.
Marilyn, do you know just offhand what other items are part of that besides item one on the ongoing list?
I think we would have to look as we go. I didn't, I didn't mark them all up as I went.
Okay.
Item number two was a council vision statement, and I think councilmember Costa, that was yours back when.
Correct, Marilyn, that was for councilmember Starbuck and I. That has been reallocated to the Economic Development Committee, who I believe will be presenting to council some work that they've been doing in that regard. Is that correct?
Actually, the Economic Development Committee did develop a vision statement for the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and if council wants, we can take a look at what that vision statement is, and if the, if council is looking for something that, is this satisfy what you were looking for, or do you want to look at something that is broader?
Okay, I think already it's sounding like I was, my intention was something broader. So, this is just for economic development?
Correct. Would you like a copy of it? It was in the strategic plan, and it has...
I think that the one that we're referring to is the one that will be right into the vision statement on the opening of the general plan, updating the old vision statement.
Okay, well, do you two want to keep carrying that ball forward?
Are you kidding? That was why we passed it off. That, that project was one that we found ourselves having a lot of, what would be the good word?
The difficulty is, with something like a community visioning process, it never starts from the top down, and we figured that out quite, pretty immediately. So, for us, the Economic Development Committee were the boots on the ground, so to speak, to start a community-based visioning process. And I've spoken with some of the committee members, and there must have been some miscommunication, because to me, it seems as though Ms. Osborne and also my new appointee, Jeremy Ball, were discussing potentially doing some community visioning that was larger than economic development, understanding that when you get a good community vision, that ties to marketing, which then is sort of in this larger loop of economic development, if that makes sense.
And you're right, the marketing committee has been working on ways to receive more public input and to engage the community via... public input and to engage the community via a website that could include surveys, and so we can get some feedback at a broader scale. That certainly could be conducive to developing something like this.
So if council would allow, I would request that Councilmember Starbuck is off the hook, and that I work as a council liaison with this subcommittee and attempt to work with them on this project.
I'm fine with that, yeah. I mean, this was, the whole intent was initially the city's vision statement, which is, as soon as you open the general plan, boom, there it lies, and when we reviewed it, we've come to terms that it was a very outdated statement, and that's when we started to do a lot of the research on it and decided to change it.
Okay, so the recommendation here would be that we carry it as a continued item, and that it would be assigned to the Economic Development Committee with Councilmember Costa as the liaison. Is that good for everybody?
Ms. Galavan, do you feel that that is an appropriate allocation, that they wouldn't mind the allocation of time that would be required for this?
No, I think that we can tie that into with the efforts that they're doing, and certainly discuss it with them and provide any updates, so it sounds appropriate. And I just wanted to ask if our planning manager wanted to share with us the vision statement that would be in the general plan update? Is there a revised draft that will be coming forward with the general plan update? So there is some language there as well.
Who's doing that one?
I think it was...
That went through the process with the Planning Commission and public input. I'll let Lucille address that.
Good evening. The draft vision statement in the general plan was part of the community outreach that was done in the original general plan workshops, and we went out to the community and looked at the language, adjusted any verbiage. The Planning Commission reviewed it and made a recommendation forward to the council, so that will be coming to you in July, I'm sorry, in July, in January, as part of our general plan workshop, where we bring you the recommendations of the Planning Commission.
So if council would allow, I would like to work with Ms. Breeze, along with the committee, and have this cross-communication take place to ensure that we cover all of our bases. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number 3, the master calendar of agenda items. Laurel, you want to comment on how we could go forward with that? Number 3, how we would implement that, or how we are implementing that?
Well, per council's request, when we talked about this two years ago, staff, this work plan that staff has moved forward is the goal to have a staff report that has a mandated deadline. We agendize at least three council meetings in advance. However, there are some times that that's not feasible, because we are, you know, we're waiting on information from another agency that delays that effort, but our goal is to agendize a staff report that has a mandate deadline, three council meetings in advance of the deadline.
And then, the other list that's in the front of the council manual that talks, you know, puts things out in the distance?
Yes. Additionally, we compiled the future city council agenda items, and each meeting, the list is included in your agenda, and it outlines at least three months in advance.
So this actually is working in conjunction with the 11-day agenda, then?
Yeah. Do we want to just knock this off, or do we want to put it in the council policy manual, or how do we want to go?
If it seems to be working effectively, for me, I think that, yeah, it should be a formal policy.
Okay. That one's in your court, Joe. Item number 4, items referred to standing boards, commissions, and committees for review require city council action will be jointly reported back to the council by the designated board member and the staff liaison, and that's something we never really got all the way into. We set it up, but then we didn't get going forward on it. Is that something we would still like to do?
It seems as though that's a practice we've been following. I know that when Ms. Galavan comes forward, usually Mr. Pepe and Ms. Osborne tend to be there with you. When we hear from the library director, we seem to have those, the trustees, present as well. So it seems to be something we're doing. I think it's a matter of if we want to formalize it or not.
Okay, Bob, your turn. You haven't said anything in a while.
I think it's working right now, so I don't think we have to do anything with it.
Okay. Dirk?
I'm going to bring some additions to this up later on during our next workshop in relation to commissions.
Okay, so this would be added to the council policy manual, because it would be a policy. Okay. Item number 5 is what we're actually doing, we're live right now, and would we want to immortalize that in the policy manual, or? Are we? Well, I don't really want to leave it on the sheet, because it's... Yeah, it's done. Yeah, it could be done, or it could be incorporated in the policy manual, if anyone feels strongly one way or the other.
Mr. Mayor, Attorney Panoni, I believe it is in the council handbook at this time.
Ah, then we don't have to do anything. We can just be done with it. See, you did a better job reading than I did. Everybody good with done? Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Number 6, single council member requests memos from the city administrator, less personnel issues, and uni litigation for distribution electronically or in hard copy, and that's what we're doing now, and is that also in the manual now, or is it something?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I think that would be done, since it's in the manual. Everybody agree to that? Okay. 7... Yeah, that one's done, done. Council requests will be listed on the council agenda after public hearings, and we've done done that. Okay. Number 8, staff to work with mayor, FEMA, Bureau of Reclamation at all, and that's something that I'm still working on, and actually had another and another meeting the other day, so that, from my standpoint, that would continue, and it's on my to-do list. Not sure how far we've gotten, but we keep trying. Everybody good with that? Okay. And the next one, number 9, Councilmember Starbuck and I are actually ready to come out and launch that now. The first thought was that we would wait until Teresa got here, and then after Teresa got here, we decided we'd wait till the Economic Development Committee got here, and then after the Economic Development Committee got here, we had a bunch of stores coming, so we decided we'd wait till the stores got here, and by February, they'll all be here, and this is the Shop Lompoc campaign with the Chamber of Commerce, so Councilmember Starbuck and I will just keep going on that.
Mary Lynn, I'm to be aware, just so you are aware, I'm sure as you are, there was already a campaign done beginning of this month, and there's been the cash mob, so I would hope that you guys are, if you do continue to work on this, it sounds like the private sector's doing great on their own, so let's definitely not make it any more difficult for them, I hope.
No, this is a parallel effort that hasn't anything to do with what they've been doing, what we've been planning.
Okay, I would hope that it's an add-on.
Yeah. Item number 10, again, this has to do with code enforcement, and I have a large code enforcement where I've tried to pull everything together, so I'd like to drop this one off, because it's going to come back up on a single item that brings all the code enforcement items together, that will be on the 20th workshop. Everybody good with that?
Just a quick question. We're dropping it from this because...
We're going to have it on the 20th, and I'm bringing all the code enforcement items into one bundle, so we can have a unified discussion. Number 11, staff directed to provide proposals and recommendations, yeah, so this one's done, because it's in the GP. Yeah, it's combined. It's no longer on the list, has its own world. Number 12 is not done, but it's going to change lives because of the direction the fire chief is taking it, and I have that other life on the other one, on the agenda for the 20th, so I just soon drop this off and pick it back up under its new life.
Yeah, it's on the 18th agenda, with Safe and Same.
Okay. Well, in that case, we'll continue it. I didn't see that. Thank you for the catch. Number 13, work with the motorsports committee to continue the project, and they're getting close to the MOU, so I'd be...
19th of February.
Yeah, there you go. I would view this as a continue. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, it's on the agenda for 19th of February.
Okay. And the beautification commission is continuing to work on both number 14 and 15. There was a moutho, which is like a typo, but not. When I did number 15, I said Parks and Rec Commission, it's truly what I said, but it was beautification commission the whole time. So I'd like to amend number 15 to read beautification commission, and then both 14 and 15 would continue under beautification, and they're working on that now, so they're cruising ahead. The Adopt a Park program is going to come back bundled with some other things also, and so at this time, I want to, I'd like to take that one off, because it's coming back in a different format.
What format?
It's included in a whole package of parks things for the 20th, so rather than having some of these individual ones, it would be combined with other parks issues. And then, number 17, Councilmember Costa.
Mary Lynn, we received a memo about this quite a while back, I believe from it was Mr. Stasi at the time. We have created, there have been some hotspots, such as here in City Hall. I think that the discussion should continue, but I know that there was some issues brought forward by Mr. Stasi, so perhaps, since Mr. Bean has taken over from Mr. Stasi, it's something that he and I can work on and finalize that. Ms. Barcelona, do you have any feedback in that regard?
I think that's a good idea.
There was a staff report, because if, does this deal with the downtown, free Wi-Fi downtown?
That was part of it, yeah, but I don't think by any means it was all-inclusive, which is why I think this is still considered ongoing. So I'll talk to him and try to get that, you know, taken care of. If it's something we can do, let's look at how to do it. If we can't, then we'll say it's done.
Mary Lynn, Councilmember Costa, one thing, you probably are looking at this, but I had a concern brought to my attention, that if we have, the example was the Southside Coffee Shop, if we have a free zone in the downtown area, will that encourage people to go in and sit and occupy seats at Southside and not buy coffee, not buy sandwiches?
Southside already has free Wi-Fi.
I realize. I'm using that as an example of other businesses, because I know it happens at Starbucks a lot.
I think it's more of, at least my intention was more like city facilities, so, you know, city parks even, or other things. Downtown, I think, is a good example, but we could, I think that if we need to come up with a strategy, it's something that we need to come up with.
Okay.
Could you share that memo when you get it with us, because that was quite a while back in workshops, that we received this report about the free Wi-Fi hotspots, and there was reasons why the utility commission and utilities didn't want to do it certain places.
You wanted a copy of the old staff report or old memo? Okay, perfect. Yeah, I'll get it.
We beat this before.
I'm going to need to find that memo, or perhaps have staff print that out again.
Okay. I think number 18, the commission's still working on that. Yeah. Number 19 is, I mean, it's ongoing, but it's done. The Charter of Excellence is out there, and I don't see any point in carrying this forward.
Were there any other recommendations made by the Single Purpose Committee that have not been implemented?
No, we did every one of them.
The lobby renovation?
No, we did that. We took down the barricades, we put up new signs.
I just, I didn't know if that was done, or that was one of the things that I knew we didn't jump right on.
Yeah, no, we took down the ropes, and we put up the signs that they recommended. I think that was, we got, didn't we get everything?
Yes, staff approached that, the low-cost approach.
And so, City Administrator Barcelona, why would this be considered an ongoing policy request and not a completed policy request?
Because the Charter of Excellence...
Yes, exactly what the mayor said, because the Charter of Excellence is an ongoing citywide policy.
I don't think you have any plan on rescinding it, do you?
I guess this, for me, this brings up a good question. I know that this, the way that we did things, I think this council has done things a little bit differently, because we had so many requests, which is a good thing, but in regards to the categorization, so it sounds like some of these ongoing things we're making into formal policies, and those will be considered completed. I don't necessarily want this to be looming, you know, as an ongoing thing, but I do think that it would require consistent review, not consistent necessarily every couple of months, but annually or biennially, or something of that nature. So I'm curious, for the city administrator's purpose, if there is a way council sees that we should be classifying these things, or if they're comfortable with just keeping it on an ongoing basis.
We could add it as a policy to the council manual. That would make it ongoing forever, until the next council changed it, and that wouldn't have to go forward on this list. The goal here is to kind of try to shorten the list.
City Administrator, what do you think is the best route to take in this regard for you?
Well, this is a citywide policy, so it's an administrative policy, and that's my performance, and really evaluate that by that term, rather than putting it in the city council handbook.
Okay.
Okay, so I think that, so I think what we're getting across here is that this item doesn't need to be included on the ongoing policy request list.
I agree. If we have a policy for it, it shouldn't be on this list at all anymore.
Okay, number 20, I don't remember whose idea it was, but I think it's a great one. I think that should continue. Yay!
This is actually part of their contract now, I think, that it's strategic goals, it's there. I think we could go ahead and get rid of it here.
Yeah, okay. It's in their contract, we don't need to keep it on here. You okay with that, Councilmember Costa? Okay. The transit site is on here in about four different ways, and so it's going forward, so I want to delete this one, because it's in other places, and I'm combining it. It's ongoing, but it's in a couple of different places. Yeah, consolidate it.
It's on the agenda for February 5th also.
Yeah, and it's down, I gotta find it again. Yeah, it's in another place. Because in the other place, it talks about the Old Town location. Number 10 on the next page. Well, it's one more place then, because it's on here for downtown, too. Okay, let's do it this way. Let's leave it on here, and we'll cross it off in the next place. How about that? We'll just take out the words Laurel Avenue, and then study site of Transit Center, so that it's all-inclusive. Doesn't mean no we're going forward with that discussion. Um, the, uh, the next one is ongoing.
Marilyn, um, I would request that that is council priority five and not six.
That makes sense.
Remind me what that is. I don't even.
Laurel and Joe.
Two calls. Oh, okay.
That'd be the old five, not the new five, which would now be four, so. No, I'm going to leave it at five, otherwise every other one of them's going to be wrong.
If I'm not mistaken, I think that this is an every six-month evaluation too. Supposed to be.
Yeah, I made a note that it's in the manual, but I didn't go look it up.
It's, it is in the council. It goes to six months. I don't think this is an annual evaluation. I think it's every six months that we do an evaluation.
Well, we could ask the city administrator to look at that and change it accordingly.
And.
Yeah. Teresa, didn't they bring that back to us already?
You've been doing it.
Haven't we kind of been there already?
The Economic Development Committee has identified existing incentives, and we do have those outlined. Um, we presently do have, uh, street impact fees that are suspended, and also, uh, Mr. Wilkie came back to council with, um, a report on impact fees, which, uh, so.
Okay, so that one's done, done.
Uh, that, that brings up, I think, something interesting. It might be under the completed council request. Marilyn and I, um, had a meeting yesterday morning, and this is one of the items that we discussed, um, and that was in regards to business incentive, a, a business incentive program. And I think that that's something that we've talked about in the past, but I know we've run into issues in regards to what we can actually do in a business incentive program. And so I was curious if staff, um, thought that that was something we could continue working on, or if they feel that we've, that is not something we can continue working on, quite frankly.
Just, I mean, you found everything there is to find.
Well, certainly as things, um, become, a, as opportunities present themselves, we would want to bring them forward to council for incentives. So, um, we're do, we're looking for those things as they come up and that we can bring them forward.
But you don't think that there's anything outstanding that we could be doing to create a business incentive package for certain, uh, potential businesses?
Do you mean a marketing package? You know, it's like a, some marketing materials that express the existing incentives?
Um, well, that would be part of it, um, but also if it can, if any other incentives can be included, or if we, you know, I think that this is the question that I asked many, many, many months ago. Um, and I don't know, I don't know if maybe there aren't any other incentives that we can provide for business development, but I'm curious if there are.
We, we don't have any that we're presently, we're, we're continuing to keep an eye out for incentives that might be available, that we could create any new incentives, but at the moment, I don't have any additional ones to bring to you, but we're looking at them, continue to evaluate where there might be, and open to ideas.
And is that something the Economic Development Committee just kind of does on an ongoing basis? They're on the hunt?
Right. So, and if there are things and programs that you're seeing in other communities that we could evaluate, we're certainly open to bringing, to evaluating those, researching them and bringing them forward. So, um, there certainly may be other opportunities as we move forward. Um, is there a particular item or area you want to explore?
Um, perhaps it's something that I can discuss with the Economic Development Committee, just because it's, you know, maybe not appropriate for this time. Um, you know, so we can do that at a, at a future date. I can meet up with you guys at your next meeting or, uh, something of that nature. I, I, I guess what I'm, from staff, is if, if there is any potential, but I guess it's something we can discuss in the future. So I, for that reason, I would actually like to keep this on, uh, the ongoing requests.
Yeah, I, I fully want to keep this on because I do have several items I want to talk about with impact fees during the next workshop also.
Okeydoke. Bob, you give a bit of leaving it on?
Yes.
Dwayne?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the next one is something that's quite a ways away, but it's, uh, something that we have to ultimately get done, and it's a, it's a requirement of state law, so I would want to leave that on, just so we don't forget we have to get it done.
Is this a council or a staff thing?
Uh, it was something I brought in based on, on, uh, state law that passed and some information that came to me.
Why don't we turn this over to staff? I mean, this is utility things, correct?
Um, the, I guess it's on here for the same reason that economic development incentives are on here, so it doesn't get lost in the shuffle. But I'm flexible.
I'm fine with keeping it on there.
Uh, number 25, that work is done. The council approved it, and it's hanging out there for implementation, so as far as I'm concerned, it's done.
Marilyn, if it still requires implementation, that'd be considered ongoing, in my opinion. Thank you.
Pleasure of the council.
Yeah, let's keep it ongoing.
And number 26, presentation of the MOU terms is ongoing. And number seven, the Colt Fairbox Evaluation is ongoing and coming soon. And now to the done, done list.
You guys got any further?
Sure. Anybody have anything to say about the last 35?
Good evening, council. Yedidiah DeVries. Pardon me, I'm a bit slow. I'd actually like to jump back and ask a clarifying question about an item on the outstanding council request, specifically item 16, the discussion on stabilizing Lumpoke Theater roofing. I'm very pleased to see this on here. I'm pleased to see that the council is moving forward. My question, however, is, this item states, is with regards to the roofing. What I didn't see either on the outstanding or on the ongoing, um, is looking into taking control of, the council seeing whether or not it wants to and how it would go about taking control of the theater to implement any roof repairs or allow for, you know, refurbishment by the council, by some other group. Um, so I wanted to ask, you know, for clarification, was that supposed to be included in item 16? Is that something that's going to come up on the 20th? Just to make sure that that too does not get lost in the shuffle, that, you know, glad to see about the roofing. Also don't want the actual taking control to get lost. Thanks.
Uh, I think the, the, probably the thing there is we couldn't do the roof. We didn't control the building, so they're kind of joined at the hip. Excuse me. Um, this page is the done, done mostly page. So I'll talk about maybe, um, you know, do you want to go through item by item? You want to just talk about the things that might be out there?
Item.
Okay. Uh, number one is the committee and all, we, we enacted all of those. Now, item number two is Teresa's job, and she's here, so that would be done. Item number three is the formation of the Economic Development Committee, and they're formed. And item number, um, four is the update of the city website for council review, and I made a note that we need to do that again, and probably it should be done twice annually.
Marilyn, um, I think that, yeah, this definitely is not on the completed list, in my opinion. Um, I think that the discussion that was had is that those staff in house did what they could, but that there, in my opinion, wasn't nearly enough, uh, to update the city website where it needs to be, um, understanding that, uh, a small amount of funds may need to be expended to hire somebody in order to update the website. So, um, I would, uh, I would like, with council's, um, approval, that this go back to the.
Ongoing.
Ongoing and, and not completed.
Yeah, and it needs to be a twice annual rather than a once, and then.
That's not, I'm sorry, that's not the argument that I made, Marilyn. I don't think that we've updated the city website to the standard in which it needs to be updated.
I'm agreeing with you, and I'm saying that we need to review it twice annually rather than randomly. And if it is the will of the.
Oh, from, sorry, my apologies.
Yeah, and if it is the will of the council that we want to ask to have some money budgeted for that process, then we should decide that now, so that the staff can carry it forward for, as a budget request.
So you want to add, I'm sorry, you want to add, uh, return to council for review two times annually?
Twice annually.
Or twice annually, perfect.
Yes.
Move it to ongoing, and then if it's council's pleasure that we, um.
Yes. That's where I'm going.
Perfect.
So, do we want to put money into it? Okay, there's two yeses. Takes one more.
I guess, are we talking about how much money we want to put into it? I'm not going to say yes for an empty, uh, blank check.
No, I think the staff would come back with an amount. We're giving it to them to say.
Yeah. I'd like to review it, but I'd like to move forward on it, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, so we're just saying, come back to us with a suggestion on how much it would take to upgrade.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Number five is the business incentive programs that we talked about previously, so they were on the other list.
So if that could be tied into the, um, impact fee.
No.
Item.
Let's, let's keep those separate, just for later discussion.
So then this business incentive program, that can be moved back on to the ongoing?
I would think so, yes, because it's actually working with the Economic Development Committee now.
Didn't, didn't we just have it on the ongoing before?
And if, if they're two separate items, if we're talking about in, impact fees and we're talking about other types of incentives, are, are you saying they're two separate items?
Yes.
But this one says to explain economic development incentives that would include the use of suspension or impact fees, but for you, Councilmember Starbuck, you'd prefer that they're separate?
I would prefer separate, just based on some impact fee stuff I'd like to discuss at the workshop, next workshop.
So then if we could, uh, place this back on ongoing, and I plan on working with the Economic Development Committee.
Yeah.
On, on other incentives beyond.
Correct.
Impact ones, and those would probably fall under studies, and the impact fees would fall under other arenas.
Sure.
And we already had that.
Maybe economic development.
Right?
Sometimes.
Yes. So this is a duplicate of 23, so this would be a delete because it duplicates 23.
What Councilmember Starbuck is saying, he does not want it to be a duplicate. He sees them as two distinct items.
I don't know what you guys are reading into this, because all it says is business incentive programs. It doesn't talk about impact fees. That's why I'm having trouble here.
23 does.
Oh, okay. I'm on the wrong page.
But Councilmember Starbuck would like, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Lower electrical rates is an incentive. Waving impact fees is an incentive, but they're two different incentives.
Okay. All right, let's do this. First, let's take out this number five. We're done with it. Now let's go back over here to 23, and is it, you guys desire to divide 23 into, uh, 23 and 28? So 23 would be incentives, and 28 would be a discussion of impact fees. Actually, you know what? You know, you, why don't you just take impact fees and put it on your list for the 20th, and we'll get it done that way? How about that?
I'm fine with that.
Okay, good.
So then now number five, uncompleted, is now going to be number 23 on ongoing. Excuse me, number.
23 is going to stay, and five is going to disappear, because it's a duplicate.
23.
Uh.
And we're going to delete impact fees from number 23.
Yes.
Then I'm bringing it up at the next.
And you're going to bring it up.
Separately.
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 Uh, number, um, did it, six is, um, it, it's within our council manual, and I don't necessarily need to carry it forward, except that it's, was currently funded by the RDA.
Mm-hmm.
Which isn't. And then it was funded by some budget leftovers that the city administrator was kind enough to chase down to keep it going. And now it needs to have a budget request of its own, assuming two more people agree with me that we need to keep a, keep removing graffiti.
It's on council priorities. I'm absolutely with it.
Okay. Um, I don't have any desire to leave it on the list because it is in our council manual already. It's just that we would agree here that staff is going to find a, is going to put a budget request in for it.
It's going to, it'll stay on this list as something that's been completed.
This, when we're done today, this list is no longer going to live with us. This is the last thing we're going to see of it right here.
But I think that this is, is a useful tool for Ms. Barcelona to keep track of all the things that she's done for us.
Yeah, but we're not going to keep publishing it over and over. We're, we're going to be done with this sheet of paper, because if you, if you look at, we now generate 11 pages of this, and we need to, we need to shorten it up. So we can get, everybody can have a fresh copy when we're done, and then we'll start our new one for the next two-year cycle.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. So we're not printing it over and over and over. Um, everybody agrees to have a budget item for this, yes?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
The home buyer assistance program was first envisioned as something for the CDBG, I think was the very first vision, and then that went, that funding didn't become available, and the next vision of it was for the redevelopment agency, and then we know what happened to that. And so now I want to share the new, new vision. Um, and I'll, where? There is a new organization that I didn't bring with me. Hey, I won't share it. There's a new organization in Santa Barbara County that does down payment assistance now, and, um, reviewing where we are in the city, we have $731,000 in lieu of housing fees, which are fees that developers pay when they don't want to build low-income housing. And so I would like to take the third try at this, where hopefully we'll succeed, and go out for, um, an RF whichever, and see who comes back to us. Some folks met with the city administrator last week too, that also do something, and take a run at going forward using these fees, and whoever we can find is the best vendor. And the staff would go looking for a vendor.
Marilyn, that sounds interesting, but shouldn't that be included on the 20th meeting?
Well, it's already an item that's on here, so I'm just trying to get it done.
But you're saying it's a different.
I'd be happy to move it to the 20th if that's what everybody would like to do. I was just going to get her done here, but I can put it on the 20th.
And you have more information, is that, is that correct?
I have, the only information I have is, is a presentation that that particular vendor made to us, and I'm not speaking in favor of that vendor. I'm actually speaking in favor of the concept and, and taking that vendor and any other one we can find, and then making the best selection.
Okay, I'd prefer that be on the 20th as a new item, if that's okay?
Uh, sure.
I'm going to actually agree with, here on that, and then the one thing, I just have a quick question about it. If we get into the loan business like this, are we turning these funds over to somebody to manage for us?
They actually write the loan, and then we fund it. It's pretty much the way it was done.
So we could actually impose our own covenants on these type of loans?
Yes. They all have a covenant.
I definitely would like more info on the 20th, I'm with it.
Okay.
I'll bring somebody else in, too.
Good.
We already have.
Mr. Mayor, we've already made a presentation from an organization I brought to about six months ago to staff, that Santa Barbara County Housing Trust Fund.
That's the guys that I've got all papers.
Okay, so we're, that, they're, we're, they're ready to do it, we're already doing it for Santa Maria and also for Carpinteria. So they bring that plan, it's already up and ready to go, so I can't ever vote on it, but that's, they, we've been doing it, and we have the money to start with it, the company does, so. And it has been, uh, always cleared on its taxes.
Okay, so we'll delete it on here, and we'll put it on there. Uh, Tim Sales is long gone, so number eight's done. Nine's done, the RFP. Uh, the Transit Center's somewhere else. Uh, the number 11 continues, and that's the one where we're, we're back in the, in the saddle again, because now we're out for the grant.
Should that be considered ongoing, then?
Yeah.
So that needs to be moved?
Yeah, because we're back out there again. Uh, number. Number 12, we executed that contract, I'm sure?
Yes.
Okay. Number 13, incorporate human curvaceous commission, commission statement in a handbook, that's done, revised handbook for 11-day advanced draft agenda, that's done, and then number 15 is the same as number 11, so, and then number 16, we got that roundabout, and then number 17 is the same as number six, so that's that page, anybody have anything they want to share with us on that page, out there in audience world? Nope, okay, so now we're going to page five, which are items 18 through 35. Charlotte's Web, we just act on that, so that's done, done, the roundabout's still done, done, the dehumidifier's done, the cost comparison of the city attorney versus in-house is done, the zoning administrator was adopted, the vehicle replacement program was amended, the next one, item 24, the community center banquet supervisors on, on my new list of things to discuss, the memo with regard to the aquatic center is done, the memo on the five leased used parks was done, number 27, report detailing the proposed contract for building services we contracted, number 28, I'm still working on, and it appears a few more times, so that would stay on my list of to-dos.
Do you want to send me that to ongoing, Marilyn?
Yeah, that would be an ongoing for, for me. Number 29 is done, number 30 is on the cusp of done, but city administrator, could, did you have a timeline of when that one's going to fall over the edge?
Yeah, that just needs to go to ongoing.
Well, I don't know, let's see if it's done.
Management Services Director Brad Wilkie advised me that we're getting close to implementing this, let's see, is Dr. Wilkie here? Want to brief council? Thank you.
Yeah, online bill, this is online bill payment.
Counsel, this has been an ongoing project of IS, and they're in the middle of getting some other items taken care of, and the next thing that they'll be working on is the testing phase of the online bill system, once that's done, they will work on creating an interface on their website, and then get it, get it up and running, so, except for some of the hiccups we've had with some of our connectivity, that was one of the things that Jeff was planning on getting done this month, but it probably will be sometime in January.
So we should just move this to the, to the ongoing section for now?
Correct, and Marilyn, I'm sorry, I want to go back to number 28, the irrigation water delivery system, city administrator, correct me if I'm wrong, that we took a formal council action on this as it stood, correct, as the original request, is that correct?
That is my recollection.
So Marilyn, we're going to keep this uncompleted, and you're planning on bringing something else on the 20th?
Uh, I was going to take it the easy way and just leave it on here, but I can surely bring it over on the 20th.
Well, I, I'm just curious, leaving it on here is a completed item, because council took a formal action, so in order to bring this back-
Yeah, I think it's on here further down, too, but that's fine, I'll put it over on the 20th. Okay. And where were we? Number 31, that one is done, done, 32, report on the county final proposal of five fire services, that's done.
Let me, let me go back real quick, 31, we're still holding this money for downtown.
Actually, I think it's, um-
This was the money that we, we set aside for the pavers.
Yeah.
It was set aside for that, so this is still an ongoing fund, but no decision was made on this, no, I'm not sure, I don't want us to drop the ball on this, this was money that was trying to move into the pothole world, and we pulled it back to downtown.
Okay, Kevin, did you have an update on where you guys are at on that, maybe? I remember somebody saying something, but I don't remember what they said.
Good evening, yes, there was money left over from that first Old Town project, and at Laurel's Direction, we have started a project to continue the pavers, and we've met with the Economic Development Commission, or Committee, to get some input from them, so it's, it's a project that's moving forward and should be built next year, so.
So that should be going, that should be an ongoing?
Yep.
Because it's not a completed project, thank you.
Okay, 32, done, and now this is where the transit center is, this is where it goes to continuing from done, or ongoing, whatever you prefer. 34, 34 is above, so this is a duplicate, so this one drops off, and, and this, this green waste is part of the solid waste discussion, so I'm going to take it off here and put it on the 20th. Anybody in the audience have anything to say about this page? Nope, okay, let's take like a five-minute stretch. Okay, page six, item 36, 11-day agenda posting, got that done, update the handbook, we got that done, is that your idea, Councilmember Costa? Number 37, was that your idea? Because it sure came in handy the other day. Number 38 is, open houses were done, number 39, the memo was done, number 40, although it's done on here, you're going to add, you're going to put that on your deal, right?
Yes, but it's not going to be the review, we've already discussed the review of impact fees.
But you're going to carry the topic?
Yes.
Okay. Number 41 is done, number 42, I'm going to pick that back up in a different direction, bringing in three proposals, so I'll bring that back, I've got stuff from three different directions, number 43 is done, 44-
That was done, but we never sent the letter back to them.
To whom?
The Public Safety Commission.
Okay, do you want something to be done, or are you happy with where it is?
I think we should send the letter.
Okay, can I just send a letter and not leave it on the list?
If you promise to do it.
I'm writing it down now. Okay, got it, I'll show it to you when I'm done. Well, the bike park obviously is continuing, although it's closed off on here.
Yeah, I would move that to ongoing, because the MOU has yet to be completed.
Yeah, no, it's definitely ongoing.
And I'll just, when, when these are on here, and they're on the closed side, we understand that the city administrator is going to wordsmith it to make it ongoing.
City administrator, is that clear?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Yes.
Uh, number 46, provide county-written notice not to begin negotiations to provide, well, we did that, number 47, we did that, Walmart appeal, number 48, we did that, number 49, we definitely kill the gophers, and it's ongoing, but I think it can just be off in its own world now, number 50, amend general functions of single-purpose committee, and we did that, and that was the continuation, have to do one more thing.
51's done.
Revised council handbook's done, funding options for Charlotte's Web, we did it again, so it's done, 53 is done, and on to page seven, anybody have anything on page six they want to talk about? Nope, okay, page seven, number 54 is done.
You know, let me, let me just ask a quick question, tying number 54 in with the pedestrian walkway on Robinson Bridge out there, this, when this went to discussion, that money was, we were going to ask SB CAG to, to use that money for that-
It has been, it has been reallocated for that purpose, there's-
Okay.
I think it's 350,000, it's in that vicinity, might be 340, and we have that item continuing-
Yes.
On the other page. And that number 55 is done, 56 is done, clock is definitely done, looks great, 58, that's done, and the aquatic center's doing very well, 59, that's done, because it's going in a different direction, 60 is, I'll bring that back.
And you're going to do 61, too?
Marilyn, my apologies, back to number 59, although that's going in a different direction, this isn't something that was discussed at the city council meeting, but that's actually a good point, so although we're going to have to be operating something that's a much smaller annual operating cost, the city will eventually inherit this bus, so to speak, and we will be required to fund and maintain it, is that correct?
No.
Well-
When their, the fund money, when Charlotte Benton's Trust runs out-
We, we would not, we would not have an obligation to continue it, we could continue it.
Yeah, I'm thinking that this is funded for how many years, was it planned, 15, 20 years, if I'm not mistaken?
I think it's actually longer now, because the cost of the bus is a lot, operating cost of the bus is a lot lower, so it actually extended it.
Okay.
See, 61, you know, I'm bringing that back, so-
Sixty or sixty-one?
Both, both are on my list for the 20th.
Sixty and sixty.
Sixty and 61, so they're, they're done on this list, and they'll be revisited. We had the budget update, do we want to establish a six-month budget update as an ongoing thing? That was a request for an update, do we want to have a six-month budget update as an ongoing event?
I would say yes.
I would say yes.
Okay, so this will be ongoing every six months.
Perhaps that's, that, the city administrator may benefit from having a list that includes items that are not necessarily ongoing in the sense that more work needs to be done to be completed, but they're ongoing in the sense that they'll always be ongoing, and I'm curious if that would be helpful for the city administrator to delineate that.
Well, that's the intent of the ongoing list that you're reviewing, so that would just be modified accordingly.
Okay, the ongoing list to me read is almost, as projects that still needed more work to have a completion status, where something like this would always be ongoing, do you see the differentiation I'm making?
It's a combination of both of what you're stating.
Okay, so then this would be my request, if it's not easier for you, it would be easier for me to see a difference between those items that will eventually be completed, and those which won't necessarily be, ever be completed, but will always be somewhat ongoing, such as this one, does that make sense?
Forever items?
Thank you, perpetual, that's, exactly, thank you.
Perpetual is probably a good description. Okay, 63 is done, because that's going on, 64, the bus stop is in place, 65-
California Space Center.
They're, they're ongoing, and they're going forward with theirs, this was the first round.
So would we need to create an item under ongoing for this? Because it's technically an ongoing project that the city's working on at staff, at council's request, that has not yet been completed.
I think it's over here on the other list, is ongoing.
Is it?
But we'll, I think it is, but we'll make sure that there is one for it.
Yeah, city administrator, if it isn't, cannot please be included? Thank you.
Let's see, where were we? 65. Resolution to continue the suspension of fees for the retrofit rebate program, because we have money in the bank, so that was done, and when, when the continuation runs out, it'll come back again, and the gopher thing is still done, number 67 is-
I'm going to bring that up on 20th again.
You want to do that, or you just want to move it to the continuing list right now?
Let's move to continue.
Yeah, that would be my goal, and then, what kind of stalled us out before was we didn't get everybody, didn't get somebody appointed, so if all of us, you got yours, mine, mine's the same guy, you, every, all of us that had someone, it doesn't change, because that was a, it was a description of that committee.
68 you wanted to-
Somebody said it to me, yeah, but there was a, it wasn't the kind of a committee where we have to go reappoint them, they didn't, they didn't expire. Okay, so those people do not have to be reappointed, number 68 is going to be displaced by the other down payment assistance program that I'm going to talk about, and number 69, we looked at that and didn't, Amgen-
Marilyn, my apologies, I think that there was discussion of, potentially, although Amgen was inappropriate for the time I presented it, that it was something we would consider in the future, is that something, I mean, you know, for me, as I've seen things develop with Amgen, although it's very successful, financially, they haven't been doing as well, and I think there's other opportunities, so I would be okay with allowing it to drop off at this time, and bringing it back if I feel like it's something that's feasible for the city at that time, but if it's council's pleasure, I wouldn't mind it also being ongoing, if it's something we think we should look into in, in the coming year.
I would say just, if, if it looks good again, bring it back, because we certainly would look at it, but rather than having to have it in the work program if we're not doing any work on it, just let it go for now, and come back if it gets hot again.
There was some research done into this, and there was some discussion about bringing it back with the budget, but if council does not want to see that done as part of that process, that is fine, too.
Counsel, how much work has been done on it up to this point? I guess that's what confuses me, if that's the case, then this shouldn't have been uncompleted, this should have been on ongoing, how much work has been done to include that in the budget?
At this point, just some preliminary research has been done, there would, there is not a budget request yet, if, so, it depends on whether council would like to, to see that brought forward, that was some discussion we previously had.
Well, I think that I would like to see it brought forward, I think it's an option, I think it's something to consider, it's a long-term thing, as opposed to if this was something we were interested in, again, we might find ourselves in the same position, where we say, well, we didn't budget for it, or it's too late, or we still have to clean up the town, and whatnot, so with the information you just provided, I would like this, to see this on ongoing.
I really have no desire to spend the amount- I really have no desire to spend the amount of money that they want, having just spent a lot of time talking to the mayor of solving on what their requirements were to bring it in over there. And they have a lot more money than we do, and they, they couldn't float the boat.
There, there is a substantial funding commitment, um, so...
Yeah, and then they, not only is it a dollar commitment, it's rooms and, um, meals and spaces and, you know, given the fact that at the very best, we're probably at a break even, and we have folks on furlough, I, I can't see spending money on this. And I, and I know you're, you have good feelings about it, so I appreciate that. So now somebody else has to say something.
Well, I'm kind of curious if maybe we could just put this, um, i- into some type of a tickler file also. You and the chamber, maybe, uh, just where it doesn't go away. Like you say, I wouldn't want to budget money for it right now, but I, I don't want it to just be, eh, didn't work and forget it, you know?
Well, I think Councilmember Costa will be right back to us if it looks like it's going to go somewhere.
Yeah, um, Councilmember Starbuck, there's also some other, um, I believe it was Chief Ralston who actually sent me some information, um, on potentially other, um, events that could take place and other, um, races. So, uh, you know, I'll take that upon myself to follow up on those and bring them forward to council when I find the correct opportunities.
Okay. Um, item number seventy is done.
I think that the...
Okay, I'm sorry.
I see, September sent a letter. Did we get a response?
Oh, which one? The Ventners?
The Ventners.
Um, we, we supported them in their bid to bring it back to Long Poak. It ultimately ended up in a cow pasture with gopher holes and cow patties where they weren't very happy. Uh, they know we'd love to have them again, and I was actually chatting with Jim.
Jim, I, well, I just, well, I just think we should also, uh, they're going to be making a decision after the first year. We should go ahead and send them another letter.
See what's it say right there? Send another letter.
Yeah, and that was why I'm saying, don't, uh, if Jim had, well, we won't say what Jim would think.
Okay. Everybody good with sending another letter?
Can we make that formal action at this workshop?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna take, I'm just gonna take this one and kick it over and make it to do, a do-over. So, yeah. Everybody in favor of that? Send another letter?
I think we should send the letter. I just want to make sure that that's something that we can do.
Yep.
Thank you.
Done. Okay, anybody have a comment on page seven? Nope. Okay. Page eight.
What was seventy-one?
Yeah, I don't even remember. I have to just tell you.
That item was the first time that council requested consideration of a neighborhood code enforcement, um, through, uh, like the respect, and there was another...
Oh, curb?
Curb, yeah.
Seventy-two is a duplicate for sixty-seven, which we left on. So we can take this one off because we left sixty-seven on. Um, we received the, the report on number seventy-three, so that's done. We handled the lead-based paint and the mitigation, so that's done. We changed the name, so that's done. We got a report on the tobacco sales, so that's done. Uh, we talked with, regarding the ROP nursing program, which they've now, I think, closed most of it for due to funding loss. Um...
Marilyn?
Ma'am.
Sorry, my apologies. Um, has the lead-based paint actually been fixed at the Marx House?
We allocated the money for it. I don't know if the contract has been let.
Can we have that ongoing until we get the final report that this has been done?
Um, do you know if we, if it's, there's a contract letter, anything on it?
The funds have been allocated, but the work is, needs to be done.
So if we can keep that on ongoing until that project is complete, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Except I'm looking for the number seventy-four. Um, seventy-five is done. Seventy-six is done. Seventy-seven... Done. Um, done. Finally. If you wonder how long it took, here's where it started. Eighty... Done and coming back to us. Um, eighty-one is done and part of the code enforcement program.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up...
Marilyn, eighty isn't completed yet.
It's on the council agenda.
So if we can have that ongoing until we have adopted a new city administrator position, uh, or description of her position, I would appreciate that.
Okay. Yeah, eighty-one is done.
Yeah, well, eighty-one and eighty-two, we're gonna go ahead and discuss again. I've got several items on that. But here again, I want to ask, here's seventy-one, which we just talked about with respect and curb again. Is this just a dupe, seventy-one and eighty-two?
Yeah, it was the next time it came up. Remember, under the old program, each time it came up, it ended, it landed on here again.
Yeah, because it was, it was completed on the twentieth, but then we started it on the twentieth here.
Um, Councilmember Starbuck and, and council, the way this reflects is, when you had a council request item, we, staff brought it to you, you addressed it, it was completed as far as satisfying that initial request. Then it came up again.
Okay.
And so it, the second time you see it, this was the next time it was discussed and it, an action for staff.
I'm just putting the pedigree on the code enforcement here.
Oh, yeah, there's several.
Um, eighty-three is done. Eighty-four is done. Eighty-five has been adopted.
Marilyn, did we get a memo in regards to item number eighty-three?
Yes.
Or is that something that was done internally?
Uh, they, they filed for their conditional use permit and resolved the complaint.
Thank you.
Any public comment on page eight? Nope. Page nine, item eighty-six.
Marilyn, I hate to, sorry to keep interrupting you. Um, eighty-five, the city administrator and I are, um, working on implementation of HEAL, um, and so I would like it to go on the perpetually ongoing list and not on the completed list. Thank you.
Wasn't this done by resolution?
Yeah, it's done, done.
Yeah, once we did the resolution, now it should be implemented, right?
The resolution calls for, um, follow-up action and then also an annual report to come back.
Okay.
Which was, I think, actually the airport commission, but eighty-seven.
This is coming back to us.
Hmm, it is, and on an appeal.
Yes.
But the actual action was done.
Which is that?
Eighty-eight.
Should we have that on back?
It's gonna come to us on an appeal next week. I don't really want to put it on the list when it's already calendared to come back to us. I'm trying to get the list shorter. You guys want to get it longer. Uh, eighty-nine. Letters were sent. Ninety. Um, I don't know how to approach ninety. I mean, we did that, but it's surely not resolved. Let me just bring it back as a, as a discussion on the twentieth. Because this is done.
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one, uh...
Are you gonna bring that back with?
Yeah, it's on my other, it's, it's on my other list, and they're not currently looking for it. Um, just, I'll talk about it when we get back to that. Um, and then here's where the EEG is, and that's continuing. I mean, it was done in this stage, but the project continues. And then ninety-three, a council table, I think it just, we just changed that to 2013 and call that continuing. Everybody in favor of doing the Old Town again?
Yes.
Okay. Huh?
No, I didn't really see a lot of added value for my presence at the table. I actually seen more added value just from walking around. I have no problem with us having it there and kind of using it as a home base, but maybe we can discuss, um, in a few months when we have some time, if we can maybe change the format of that a little bit.
I'll agree with that. There's some ideas that I was thinking about.
Well, we're gonna be really done here really quick, so we're, we're a page from done, so if you got some ideas, let's stick them in right now.
But we want the people to hang around. Now, there's different people that I think we could involve in those booths with us also.
I mean, I, I, I receive more interaction, a lot of the interaction we want to have is with those that are vendors there, and they're sitting at their tables. And so if we're sitting over here at ours, we don't have the ability, and although we would try to do it, um, I'd always want to try to make sure I was running back to be at this tent, our tent as well. So we didn't really get a chance to talk to a lot of the vendors. Um, you know, I don't know, maybe I should wear a T-shirt that says, I'm a council member, ask me questions or something, you know?
Well, you could wear your new name badge. That'll help.
A name badge, I could, you know?
Uh, maybe, maybe the solution to that, because most of the time when I was there, there was two of us, so one person could go out and wander around and talk to people, and the other person hung around the booth, and then we flipped.
I also noticed that I was scheduled, I think, probably more than anybody.
Good job, Ashley.
So silly, went twice, and Bob was running for office, so, uh, if we could ensure that there was at least some, you know, give time.
Well, this, this next year, we won't have that issue. So, so two in the booth, I think.
So is there, this isn't something you want to bring back to discuss in a few months prior to the Old Town market?
Uh, I'd kind of like to get it done now, if there's anything else that you want to add to it.
I'll throw a suggestion out very quickly. One of the, the things that got the most attention at one of the numerous times I was at the table was, uh, the Economic Development Committee showed up and had pictures of the pool, the timers, uh, our fundamental ideas, goals, and what they were doing. And that did generate interest of what was going on. Nobody cares what a council person's doing back there, but they really cared about what was going on at the pool. So, I mean, I think that incorporating some of these little special committees and things to sit in there with us would probably be a good thing. It appeared to be a good thing this year.
So maybe rotate it and ask each committee to hang out with us once.
So maybe one council member and a special guest. I prefer if it's one, just so that way I don't have, I have, I'm available and I'm free to interact and do the activities more and less of sitting at the table, waiting for people to come talk to me.
Go ahead.
Well, I think you need two, but one can be walking around doing what they want to. You need one at the table explaining what's going on. I think what was brought in by economic development is very important, and this year it's still going to even be that much more because we're going to be talking about the facility at Hancock. And we're gonna need, we need to have the pictures of that up. There's still a lot of people in this town that don't even know what's going on at Hancock. I talk to them all the time. Oh, is something going on up there? They, you know, they're sort of oblivious. So we need to have that information out there for the general public coming in there and the people who are coming from out of areas. So that goes with the economic development and what other goes in there, but I think we need to have at least one councilman in there with that, and then the other one, they can change places. I only did it for twelve years, so...
Definitely have the experience. So I, I think, I don't know who said about the pictures, but that's true, because when we do Boy Scout stuff and we're trying to get people to come over and talk to us, we put up the cool pictures. And, you know, to your point, maybe you could get Hancock to bring their stuff down and put it up, too.
Oh, yeah. It would be worth it.
Okay, any other contributions to that? Um, number ninety-four is done on my list for parks as a discussion of the next step.
Yes.
Um...
Ninety-five's done.
Ninety-five's done.
Ninety-six.
Yep. Ninety-seven's done.
Well, let's just say that we don't have the, the policy, right?
Uh...
Or do we need a policy?
I don't think we're gonna do it again, so I don't necessarily think we need a policy. It was kind of a one-time weird deal.
But we have more trees.
Tell me what you want.
I don't know. I'm throwing things out.
Okay. I think we've worked that palm tree to death.
I, I, well, that instance, yeah, I would agree, we worked it to death. Um, I, although maybe current staff wouldn't do that again, um, that current staff won't be there forever. So, uh, if we can somehow delineate, it doesn't have to be complicated, it can be very simple, um, to avoid something like that from occurring again. I'm also curious, um, if that entire, uh, issue has been resolved. Did we go and replant the trees in that location?
Yes, we did.
So then for me, that should be ongoing either way until that's completed as well. So I would say we move this to ongoing for potential discussion of a policy and also for completion of that project.
Okay, since this didn't cover that, how about if you bring that up on your list for the twentieth and delineate all those?
But it should have included that because it was part of something that's already taken place. It's not a new suggestion.
Okay, I'll write it all up.
Well, I think the city, city administrators, that clear what my intention is?
Can you explain that again?
Sure. Not a problem. And the discussion of, of the issue that was brought to council, um, part of the discussion that was had is brought, as, as spoken to by Councilmember Starbuck, was a policy, um, in regards to how to avoid this in the future with tree removal. Um, you know, my argument was that we shouldn't be yelling at staff if they didn't have a policy to follow. So we discussed, uh, creating a policy, and the other issue is that the item itself is still outstanding, in my opinion, because, uh, it has yet to be actually resolved. So it doesn't sound like the trees have been moved, uh, into the location in which we were discussing in the first place at this time. So for me, it would be ongoing until the trees are where they need to be, um, as discussed. It sounds like they, that will happen soon. And it should be ongoing until council decides whether or not it is, and we can, I think we can discuss this on the twentieth, uh, whether we want to have some sort of policy in that, in, in regards to tree removal as well. Those, those are the two things that were discussed with that agenda item that evening. Both have yet to be completed. So for me, we got, received a report on it, and we listened to it, we made a decision, but it's not completed yet.
I'm a little concerned on what policy we want. Are we gonna have a policy on things that we should not do? This, we're asking for a policy now that we're not going to be planting trees, grow them, and remove them, but that seems a pretty limited, limited item. Almost what we're looking at is having a policy on things that staff should not be doing. And that's, it doesn't seem like we want a policy like that.
Councilmember Starbuck, what was your intent?
Oh, I was just asking. I didn't have an intent here. I'm going, you know, request for report on tree removal policy. I just was saying, I don't think that we'd ever established a policy for tree removal. I mean, is there, there, there's gotta be something we remove trees. So I, I'm just kind of at a wash on here. I, I, I'm thinking maybe the wording could have been the tree selling policy? When we market our trees? I, I don't know.
So any other...
Do we have any more trees to sell? What's our policy on that?
[laughing].
Tell them.
Mr. Mayor, maybe with this assessment going on, there's not a thing wrong with the city raising trees and selling them to make money. And so maybe you should come back to council for discussion, how to handle it, where they're gonna go, and what the process is. But there's not a thing in the world wrong with selling trees. But there's not a thing in the world wrong with selling trees if you have customers for it.
Councilmember Lingel, does that clarify your concern?
Yes, thank you.
And again, I would like it to be ongoing so we can get an update potentially, or at least find out when the project has been completed as well. Thank you.
Got all that, chief.
Turn of trees.
Ninety-nine was done, but I got a call Saturday, then it's gonna be undone, so we can either start all over again or we can just change this back into an ongoing project because the county's gonna start down on the road again, so we'll have to start down the road again. What would you all like to do?
This particular item is completed.
Yeah.
Comes up again, we bring it back up again.
It's already come up again, so all I'm gonna do is move it over to the twentieth if we don't want to continue it here.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine, hundred, one oh one.
Hey, hold on, I gotta make some notes. Okay, anyone in the audience want to talk about anything on page nine? On to page ten. Okay, we gave them their letter of support and they are forming going forward, but they haven't formed yet, so do we want that to be continuing or are we done with it?
Say that again, Marilyn.
We gave them the support.
Where are you at?
I'm on number one oh two. It's the next page, right?
That's done. We did that.
I understand, but we just went back and took some other things that we did, but the project isn't done. So we wrote them a letter of support and they are still going forward. Do we wish to continue to support them or do we wish to bring it back at another time? I'm trying to figure out where you guys are going because you're bouncing around a little on me.
We sent them this letter.
I see this is completed.
This is completed, yes.
One oh three.
I guess this would be ongoing because it looked after the repairs have not been completed.
Okay, let's combine that back with, where was the other one?
Yeah, we did update state.
Seventy-four, so this will be combined with seventy-four.
It's evading me right now. What was the name of the fund that was allocated to Good Samaritan?
CDPG Capital.
They weren't home funds, though.
No.
So I almost feel like because this is the home funds issue, this isn't ongoing, this had been completed. But that there should be an ongoing item in regards to, because it was a council request specifically to the other.
Okay, the other funds were allocated to them. The question I think we need to ask ourselves is, once we take an action, do we need to track every action going forward to its completion? Or once we've taken an action, are we done with it and the staff would come back to us if it wasn't completed?
I would say in normally, so all the other monies that were allocated in a regular manner, staff could follow up on those and we wouldn't need to follow them. This specifically, I think we have an investment in tracking because there was specific council requests involved after the confusion during the allocation of the funds process. Does that make sense?
Well, we, we agreed to follow on the funds for the pavers for downtown, so I think it's similar. Everybody, so how do we want to deal with this? Because what's on here isn't correct. Do we want to amend it? Do we want to reintroduce it on the twentieth? How do we want to go forward?
I think, I think let's just amend it because we want to make sure that the repairs are completed. But we can attach it to the request concerning the lead base paint.
So we're gonna tie it together with.
Mayor and council.
Yes.
Those funds were allocated through the CDPG program for the capital improvement and the next caper will reflect the achievements with those funds that were allocated for the project. So it's gonna come back to you next year.
Okay, so do we want to continue to track this or do we want to just let it do what it's gonna do?
I think we should continue to track it.
Okay, so one oh three is gonna be combined with?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four.
But with different wording because they weren't, it wasn't home funds.
I just changed it.
It's gonna be amended.
Thank you.
Okay, the flagpole for the community center is ordered.
That should be an ongoing.
Okay. I think we're loading up a lot of things on a list that.
We don't need to micromanage, follow it.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, the poll's ordered. If it doesn't show up, I'll notice it and it can come back, but I don't really have a desire to carry that one forward.
I have a memo.
Does anybody want to carry that one forward? We did amend the, invite the Economic Development Committee. We filed the report with the grand jury and we'll give them the final document when it's prepared and it would be the result of the consultant's report.
Marilyn, I don't want to interrupt. I, I want to come back to an argument that I made earlier in that having a classification system that is a little bit more complex than just three titles may assist us in this, whereas the flagpole, although it isn't completed and maybe shouldn't receive the completed title, maybe should be classified in a different way. I don't want to make this overly complex, but I think having a few categories as opposed to just three may assist us in tracking these things where we're not overloading Ms. Barcelona, but we're also not putting things on a completed list that maybe are still considered outstanding in some sense.
We need to go back and change what we agreed to at the beginning of the meeting because at the beginning, beginning of the meeting, we agreed to three categories. So if we want to change that and.
Well, we've already added a fourth.
No, we haven't added one yet, but I'm sure willing to go over here and do it if that's what everybody wants to do.
I thought we agreed to a perpetually ongoing, which is a subcategory of the ongoing, so it's technically now four categories.
Okay, do we want to have a fourth category?
I'm just used to the idea of matrices being a little bit more well-defined in the sense that it becomes easier for Ms. Barcelona to track and for us as well, so, so like you said, so we don't have to overload her with all of these ongoing, ongoing things, they could have their own subcategory of not completed but not ongoing also. There can be something.
Okay. Pick a name for the new category you want to add, so I can write it in.
Maybe we have some suggestion via public comment?
Hi, you need to re-again. It sounds like you have things that are unstarted, things that are actively being worked on, things that are open, that's, you've done something and you need it to actually finish. You have things, and you have things that are recurring, things for which our report is going to come back. And then you have things that are completed.
Thank you.
What was the first and second? Sorry, I want to write down what you had suggested. You have completed, recurring, open.
You have, you seem to have open, you have unstarted, active, open.
Recurring and.
Recurring and completed.
Thank you.
That would make five. Okay, so tell me what word you want to add so that everybody can agree to it and we can go forward. So far I have, what we agreed to previously was projects completed, projects ongoing and projects not yet begun. So do you want to add perpetual projects?
Or recurring is, I'm, I'm okay with the word recurring.
Okay, recurring projects.
So that would be if something needs to be, like Councilmember Starbuck pointed out, the council review of the two appointees, is that annually or every six months, whatever that is, that would go on the recurring list, for example.
Works for me. Everybody else good with that?
Good with it.
Okeydoke. So we have now corrected our first document.
But then in addition, you have those things that, there is a difference between those that are, again, ongoing. My apologies if you're laughing. I, you know, I don't want to, again, I, as we said, we don't want to micromanage. I just, maybe Ms. Barcelona can come up with a more effective way of categorizing these because I don't think three categories is as effective as it can be. There's a suggestion from the public of five potential topics that you could utilize. I can leave that up to you, but if you understand the will of which I am expressing, recurring needs to be one, and then for projects that we are following but have given to you but are not yet completed should be in another, although they are not actually completed. Does that make sense? So the flagpole is not completed, action has been taken.
That would be an ongoing project. We need to finish this for the city administrator. I don't, we don't need to kick one more can down her road, so I think completed is fairly self-sustained, self-explaining. Recurring projects would be those things which never go away. Ongoing projects would be those projects that will go away and projects not yet begun are the ones we haven't started on yet. Does that cover all your categories?
It doesn't, but that's, I think that nobody's given me a strong enough opinion to support what I'm saying and I don't want to waste any more time, so.
Okay. So let's see, let's go back over here and we were on?
Hundred and four.
Hundred and four and we're back to the flagpole, whether that's completed or ongoing.
It would be ongoing to the whole of plan, wouldn't it?
Wouldn't be for me, but if that's where you guys want it, I'm willing to put it there. I've already scratched it out three times, so I scratch it out a fourth. It keeps going kind of back and forth. It's your, it's your flagpole, Dirk. What do you want?
You started it.
You started this flagpole.
I didn't forget it, but.
We didn't forget it, we never planned to have one.
Make it ongoing, it's not a completed project.
Okeydoke. Um, we did the next one, it's definitely done. The grand jury letter is done, the presentation, Housing Authority Executive Director is done, he came and presented. The staff to draft a letter in support of the Museum Association project for landscaping, the letter is done, the landscaping project is ongoing, but the thing that's ongoing is the MOU. So do we want to retain this in some fashion or are we happy that it's done and if they have a problem, they'll come see us?
We already have it listed earlier as with the MOU.
Ah, did we? Okay, so this one can be done. And then, one oh nine?
One ten.
One ten. Well, we have the theater back on the first page, the last item on the first page, as an ongoing project.
It's still ongoing because we have a presentation coming up.
Yeah, we already have it ongoing back over here on the other page somewhere. Somewhere else it's already.
The roof, when we're talking about the roof.
Yeah, and we all understand that to include et al. Okay, let's see. So that's the both of those. One eleven, we answered Mr. Whittmore's request. That report was provided to enforcement. The process was amended with regard to dishonorably, to honorably discharged veterans.
Yeah, the wording in thirteen, one thirteen there needs to be changed from dishonorably to honorably.
And the Marx House is up there on one oh three. We have sent the letter to the school district and we have updated the website with regard to veterans and we received the list that we have in our hand. And then the last one is the appointment of the EDC Associate Member position and we did those. Okay, so that would be the entire list unless there's something someone wants to revisit. And my responsibility will be to add the down payment assistance program, all these to the twentieth, the irrigation water project, the letter to the Public Safety Commission, the.
Ventners.
I'm going, just, dinner? The county wine ordinance, the frisbee golf, the Halama Beach campground and the letter of support to the Ventners. And I will be asking them to come to Lompoc. Okay, anything else that I haven't written down that's on my plate? Anybody got anything?
I've, I've got a comment.
Okeydoke.
We're gonna turn in our next goals on the fourteenth.
Correct.
For our following workshop on the twentieth. And then they were gonna be collated, I understand, to similar, we're not gonna, what concerns me here is that if Councilmember Costa has a thought about something and I have a thought about something very similar.
They'll be, they'll be together on the same page rather than.
But not as one thought.
No. But the two things will be next to each other. The problem we had last time is they were put in there, it was my list, your list, her list, his list, and then trying to run a meeting and bring all those lists together was very problematic. So this time the goal is to take similar items and put them on the sheet of paper next to each other.
And then we'll have somebody's name beside them, then someone will know whose item it was, so we.
And if, if two people request exactly the same item and exactly the same words, which I kind of doubt, both names will be on it.
Okay.
So don't be copying my homework. Anything else? Last chance on this. Going, going? Okay. So let's see. Oral communications, last two minutes, anybody want to crack it? Come on down.
Carol, Carol, Carol Benham, Lompoc resident, and also asking some questions that I hope to clarify for the record as well. Mr. Mayor, good evening, all of you, I forgot to say that. When you, you spoke about $731,000 that were available for kind of a down payment assistance. Are you referring to the Lompoc Affordable Housing Trust Fund?
No. We have, in lieu of, in lieu of housing fees that are held by the city and paid by developers.
Right.
Those would be available for consideration.
And I thought that was what the Lompoc Affordable Housing Trust Funds were.
I've never heard it referred to by that, but I could be incorrect.
Okay.
I'm advised that, yes, that is another way of describing it.
Right.
I look at the journal entry on the treasurer's report and that's not what it says.
In the staff reports, when those funds have been utilized, that's what they were referred to as the Lompoc Affordable Housing Trust Funds? It was those funds that were partially used to purchase the Northeast Street property, the vacant lot. And then a question on the forensic audit. The letter did go. I, I do have a copy of the letter that was sent to the DA, the auditor controller and the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. Could I ask if there'd been any response to that? And then my next and last question.
Wait, let me answer that one. Wait, let me answer that one.
Sure.
So I don't forget.
Sure.
I didn't look at the mail on my desk today, because I was working on this, but as of Friday, I had not received a response.
Okay, thank you.
If it would come to me.
And then just in general, I thought I heard a very strong consensus from the council members that some of the information that had been requested in public session, but provided by memos to the council members only, not presented in a public session, I thought I heard a strong consensus that that public could get access to that information that was provided by memos. Is that correct?
Actually, we agreed to put them on the website.
But the ones in the past, then would I, submit a public records request?
I don't think there have been very many. This was not a tool that we previously used. We agreed to it a little while back, but I can't think of the last one. I'm sure there was one before this.
There's many on this list, where the item was completed by giving the council a memo, so I thought if perhaps Stacy or the city administrator could confirm, that I can get copies of those via public records request.
They're public documents.
Okay, thank you.
Just for the record, as long as they're not attorney-client privileged documents or otherwise confidential.
Yes. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, we will adjourn to the Lompoc City Council. We'll adjourn to a regular meeting on Tuesday, December 18th, 2012, at 6:00 PM.